On behalf of the Town of Silver City, I'm calling this meeting of the Silver City Town Council to order, and I'd like to invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and following that, the salute to the New Mexico State Flag.
(Inaudible)
Thank you, and I'd like to invite you to meet our town administration that's here tonight, our manager Alex Brown, our clerk Alfred Sadeo, our town attorney Charles Kretic, Chief Potillo is here, Fire Marshal Vasquez, our code enforcement officers are also here. We'd like to also welcome members of the press as well as the general community members. Next item is changes to the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? No changes. Next item, three of ceremonies, and the Town is honored to recognize Thomas Hernandez as Employee of the Month. And Chief Potillo, I would like to ask you to present this to him. Does anybody like to join us?
(Inaudible)
I got something for you. I got a... Ready? Mayor Council, on March 5th, 2025, approximately 0900 hours, Code Enforcement Officer Thomas Hernandez was on routine patrol in the area of Boston Hill, near the Cheyenne Street entrance. He observed a female subject walking a dog without a leash. He also observed a vehicle in the parking area belonging to the owner of the dog. Throughout this investigation, it was determined that he, she had a fictitious license plate. Therefore, her identity at the time could not be confirmed. Without hesitation, Thomas continued to investigate this case, and the next day, he located the vehicle in front of the public library. Patrolman Jaden Rodriguez assisted Thomas and responded to the library. The female subject was uncooperative and continued to resist and obstruct. Meanwhile, Officer Hernandez and Officer Rodriguez remained calm and professional throughout the entire interaction. Conjunction with CYFD, upon further investigation, it was determined that the female subject had illegally taken her child away from the biological father and across state lines. She was later charged and arrested for custodial interference, which is the fourth degree felony. We also learned that the child had been reported missing for approximately a year and a half. The child was taken into protected custody and was able to be reunited with the father. Thomas's dedication, persistency, professionalism, empathy, and compassion for citizens of Silver City has made a tremendous impact on our community. Thomas goes above and beyond every single day to investigate quality life issues within our town. He truly understands the importance of providing quality service to our citizens, which can lead to positive, life-changing events. Additionally, on this, I do want to acknowledge some of the other officers that were part of this. Sergeant Joseph Aguirre, Officer Chris Baca, and Officer Bryson Lockyer were also part and took part in this arrest, worked with Thomas, and they'll also be receiving letters of commendation from our department. So, Thomas, congratulations. You earned it. You work really hard, and I appreciate everything that you do.
Thank you. (Applause) I just wanted to say thank you very much. Appreciate it.
(Laughter) Add many words.
And all action. The Town would like to recognize James William Bill Harrison. Mr. James William Harrison was born on June 22nd, 1922, and whereas Mr. Harrison is a World War II Navy veteran, and whereas Mr. Harrison was the Town of Silver City manager from 1969 to 1971, whereas Mr. Harrison was the first director of the Southwest Council of Government, and whereas Mr. Harrison served as a Grant County Commissioner from 1993 to 1994, whereas Mr. Harrison was a business law professor at Western New Mexico University, and whereas the Town of Silver City Mayor Ken Ladner and the Town of Silver City Council would like to recognize and honor Mr. Harrison for his service to our country and our community. And whereas Mr. Harrison will be celebrating his 103rd birthday on June 22nd, 2025. Now therefore, the Town of Silver City would like to declare June 22nd, 2025, James William Bill Harrison Day. Mr. Harrison is not able to be here tonight, but Clyde Howar will be accepting the proclamation. And I plan to go out to Fort Baird where he is and present this to him, and if any council member would like to go out there with me, I'll let you know what time. Would you like to say a few words on behalf of Mr. Harrison?
He would really love to be here, but now he's a resident of the veterans section at Ford Baird Nursing Home and is basically unable to travel. So, but he would totally love hearing this proclamation and being here with you. My name is Hop Clyde Howar, and I had the privilege of having lunch with Bill once a week for two years and found out all the things that he has done for this community, all the things he did at Western, all the things, all the folks behind me are members of Good Shepherd Episcopal Church, and Bill is a very valuable member of our church. And everyone who knows Bill loves the guy. And there is nothing better than spending time listening to Bill tell stories because they're important to the life of Silver City, important to Western New Mexico, important to church, and as you mentioned, Bill is a veteran of World War II, of which there are not many left. But we really need to honor those veterans, and we just had D-Day where we really remembered what those folks did for us when they landed on that beach and he was in the Pacific. So, thank you very much for the proclamation, and I assure you, he will get the proclamation.
Next is Agenda Item Five, Council Comments. And first on the list tonight will be Counselor Snyder.
I have no comments today. I have no comment.
No comment. Counselor Prince.
No comments this evening?
Thank you. Counselor Canno.
I just want to congratulate Code Officer Ananis again and thank him for all the times that I go to his office and ask him weird questions and he doesn't even flinch, and he goes and investigates. I really appreciate all the work you do for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ben Comwell.
Thank you, Mayor. Also want to congratulate Thomas for being named the Employee of the Month. It's amazing just how great some of our, whatever, a lot of our city employees have done. This is remarkable, remarkable story here, and I hope the Daily Press does a little bit follow-up on that, do a little story on that, at least think about it. The other thing I wanted to mention is I've had a couple of people call me and actually come by my house complaining about their recent water bills. They've seen a tremendous hike in that, and I've done my best to explain to those that came over and I spoke to explaining that there was a night I'd done not too long ago where some of the city employees were asked to go around town and see how many trash bins were at residents, and what they found was there was a lot of people that had more than the one that they were paying. So that's where they're getting the extra charts for having those extra containers. If you want to correct that, get ahold of City Hall, and you can also, there's a couple of options, I guess, and you might help me out on this, Alex. I had a 35-gallon container that I had in my backyard. I wasn't aware that I had to put it out in the street. When I did, it was, I put it out two or three times a year, didn't think much about it. I got charged extra, and I was informed that was the reason. So the option I decided to do is contact Waste Management System and ask them to pick up my container, because I didn't use it that often. Another option is if you do need a larger container, just go to City Hall and ask them or call Waste Management System.
Yeah, Universal Waste.
Universal Waste, I'm sorry. And they will replace it with a larger one. But if you continue to have those extra bins, you're going to continue to get those bills for that. So anyway, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments? I just have a couple of announcements, I guess. This afternoon, I received a text from the New Mexico Department of Transportation Supervisor for this district, which is District One, in which he notified me that the state will be improving highway conditions within the Town of Silver City. Last year, Mr. Brown, along with several town employees, met with him and other members of the Department of Transportation, and they looked at a number of areas within Silver City in terms of safety. Do you want to make any comment on that, Mr. Brown?
Well, Mayor... There's a, there's a safety program. It's some set-aside funding that are specifically for safety projects. You have to ask for a study to be done, which we did at that point, and we were focusing on the area of the intersection of from, well, from 180 from 30 east, from Swan all the way to Highway 180 West, and then down 90 to 14th Street. That was the scope of the safety project for that intersection, and if, if that study finds that there are safety needs, then they are required to come back and fix them. So this is the result of that safety study. We did, we requested one a few years back, and that's how we got the work done up by Walmart, those intersections up there. And so we will continue to be requesting safety studies around town. We were looking at the intersection of Rose, not Rosedale, Ridge Road, where we've had multiple deaths at that intersection. We're going to ask them to do a safety study, and hopefully they will look at doing something out there at some point.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, for all of your work on this, and I'll just quote from Mr. Guerrero's text. He said, "The scope of the project includes signing, signal improvements, striping, refreshing, traffic control, lighting installation, and miscellaneous construction along US 180 between mile markers 111 and 123." The project is tentatively, he said, scheduled to start late summer, and it will include that intersection of Highway 90 and 180, so.
Yes.
At my, I've also received several questions about those who have been taking their cardboard out to put in the recycling bins that used to be located in that big parking lot by Harbor Freight. And we, we, we lost the ones there, but the Southwest Solid Waste Authority is now looking at a new location because the owners didn't want those in that area. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes on the regular meeting, May 27, 2025. Do I hear a motion? Counselor Snyder?
I move to approve the minutes of a meeting on May 27, 2025.
Is there a second? Counselor Prince?
Second. The motion is due.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Next is public input, and I see that one person has signed up. Laura Shoren?
Good evening, and thank you for letting me speak. So as you all know, I love downtown, and I see what it could be. I wouldn't have a shop there if I didn't, but everyone is at risk there. Retail, of course, goes in ways, but there are certain events that should be prosperous for us every year, and they're not. I listen to retail that, of course, has been there way longer than I have, and like one shop, they're 75% down for this year. So people say that they haven't been downtown in years because they're afraid when I talk to them. One woman was accosted, and she tells everybody she knows at the college, and I'm sure others. So why isn't this a concern and something being done for anyone other than business owners? I can't even, or I won't hire somebody because of it. Anyone that sees it as a gem is mistaken. I see it could be, but it is not. The tourism is declining pretty, you know, quickly, in my opinion. So, but it's a double-edged sword that I talk about it, but I would need to bring it to light, I believe, and you're the ones that can help me and change it, you know, and make it better. So I thank you for the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Item Eight, Reports. Mr. Brown, do you have any reports?
I asked Bert Roselli to do a report on the museum, but he can come after Mr. Hawkins.
Mr. Roselli?
After.
Oh, he'll do it after Mr. Hawkins.
Okay, all right. So we're going to have a presentation by Silver Schools Superintendent, Mr. William Hawkins.
It's not already, I get to move the microphone up, so I felt really good. Thank you for that. It's way up here, and I have to drop it. Mr. Mayor, Town Councilors, so I come before you to give you an update on where we are in Silver Schools regarding a conversation we started in January 2024. For the sake of time, I'm going to try to go through this as succinctly as possible this morning. I think they gave me 24 minutes this morning, and that was a record for me, so I'm going to do my best to fly through this. If you see me speaking fast, or if I say something and you go, "What?", just give me a wave, I'll slow down, and I'll go back. That being said, what I wanted to talk with you about is a consolidation conversation that started recently, right? I'm going to talk about our goals. I'm going to try to give you some background and context based on our previous conversation. I believe I was here before you approximately a year ago. I'm going to go over some of the scenarios that the task force looked at, the considerations that are going into this dialogue, what the implementation plan and timeline might look like once the board makes its final decision, and then the next steps, and then I hope to leave some space for you to ask me questions as well. Is it okay if I move around a bit, or am I being recorded and need to stand right in this one location? I got to stay in this one location? That's really hard for someone like me. Okay, all right, so here we go. First and foremost, I want to acknowledge the individuals who worked with Silver Consolidated Schools for our Facilities Master Plan, as well as helping us to develop our feasibility study. When we began our Facilities Master Plan process, we brought in Capital AE. Capital AE worked for school districts around the nation and definitely around the state of New Mexico. They come in, they look at, they evaluate your facilities, they look at your enrollment, they look at all aspects of the structural components of your schools, and they help you as a community to develop a plan moving forward based on what you need. And so these were the individuals who came back after working with us for our Facilities Master Plan and helped us dive deeper into the feasibility of what needed to happen next. There were several elements that we looked at as outcomes. We looked at the consolidation. We needed to determine what the best strategy and most efficient use of vacant space would be for Silver Schools. We looked at the best fit, right? What were the boundary needs? What was going to make most logical sense? What were the improvements the schools that might be consolidated need? What would be the final decision as far as the dispensation of spaces or schools that were no longer being used if that was the decision? And finally, we asked that the committee come up with a timeline to recommend to the board and for the community to understand how all this would take place. These are the elements with which the task force worked under. So working backwards, the Facilities Master Plan made a lot of guiding decisions for the district. To keep in mind, the Facilities Master Plan Committee was comprised of over 50 members of our community. That's teachers, that's parents, that's grandmothers, people who go to church here, community leaders within our district. So when we talk about the Facilities Master Plan and later talk about the task force, these are, these groups were comprised of people within Grant County who are vested in our schools, invested in our communities. I think it's important to bring that out because these aren't decisions that were made by me or several people sitting in a dark room. This was a collaborative effort. We looked at quantitative facts regarding our district. We looked at the needs, the functional needs of our buildings, and we asked the committee to set a direction and a timeline and a map to get this done. Ultimately, we wanted to do this respectfully for our community and recognizing that we had some distinct needs that needed to be addressed. The task force, the feasibility task force, was comprised of 20 members. A few moments ago, I mentioned to you that the feasibility study committee group had over 50 people that met beginning in January evaluating the state of our schools. When they made their recommendation, one of the things the board said was, "We appreciate the recommendation and the thoughtfulness of this committee. Now let's put a task force together to look at the viability of this recommendation." And that's what this committee did. Sometimes people get a little frustrated, they call it paralysis by committee, a committee to look at a committee to look at a committee, but this is a process that really needed to be deliberate. And so the committee did their part. We formed a task force, staff, parents, school administrators, community, and a board representative. To add context to this, with the Facilities Master Plan, there were several, seven elements that needed to, that became part of the guiding focus of that document and will guide us over the next five years. We wanted to make sure that we continue to develop CTE and career pathway programs within our schools. We wanted to look at the community partnerships, whether it be with Freeport or with the city or with the county. What are we doing to continue to provide opportunities for our students? Legislative issues, we continue to deal with those needs in our community, improving and staying up with technology, professional development and making sure our teachers remain skilled. Demographic enrollment was huge because it played a part in looking at what's, what do we need for our schools and what do we not need? What do we have in excess? And finally, most importantly, the Facilities Master Plan honed in on our facilities improvements, recognizing that we've got some aging buildings. To recap a conversation we had not too long ago, as you know, Silver Schools over the past two years has been seeing a declining enrollment. That's not just in our county and Grant County, but across the nation and across New Mexico. We see a 2.5, 2.4% declining enrollment since 2003. Moving forward, we're projected to have a 2% continuing declining enrollment, but it looks like we may stabilize a little bit, right? But as you can see there, we're going to go from approximately 2,200 students to get close to 1,930 students, right, in the next five years. That's just the way it is in our area, in our community, in our nation. If there's an explosive, I don't know, commercial event, right, that brings in or drives in, you know, a lot of different industry, definitely we would see a change in there, but the current projections show that. All of this information, along with facilities needs, created the Facilities Master Plan. This document is a resource we are using between now and 2029 to guide how we address capital needs within our schools. This was adopted by our board May 20th. It focused in on five key elements. First and foremost, it said, "We need to right-size our elementary schools to align with our projected enrollment." When we talk here in a few minutes, you're going to look at utilization and utilization rates in our schools and capacity of these schools, and you're going to see a stark difference in what we could hold and what we're actually holding. What the feasibility committee said is, "We've got to address this," all right? We can't continue at the current pace that we're in. It also recognized that Cliff Schools at the time was ranked the 11th worst-conditioned building in the state of New Mexico. We needed to address that. They needed a new school. It talked about continuing to monitor and upgrades, safety and security upgrades for our schools. There was a need to address Benny Field and recognizing that we would really like to have a world-class facility for our students, and right now, the fields are there, they're usable, obviously, but they could be a lot better. And then finally, in that whole process, if we go out for a bond at the time, they said, "We need to make sure that we prioritize approximately $22 million for priority repairs for our schools." That's what the feasibility study did. So with that, I was tasked with going out to the community to request approval for a bond. That bond was for $24 million. With that bond, we'd be able to approve our school buildings, qualify for a waiver request with the state to then go forward to request a rebuild for Cliff. In order to get that waiver request, we needed to go from 5.47 mils to 10 mils. The bond was approved, we were able to do that, and we were able to access $44 million potentially from the state to build a new Cliff Schools. And that's a reflection of the community recognizing these are the needs of what needed to be done. Along with that, we'll be able to address the critical needs around the district here in Grant County as well. Am I going too fast? How am I doing? Excellent. I needed to take a breath. With that, we passed the bond, 24 million. However, in the process, we saw SB9 failed. Who knew that I needed to keep repeating over and over and over and over again, flip the paper over? I didn't do that. I didn't do it enough, at least, and so it failed by a small margin, but still failed. We applied for the PSCOC award. Cliff Schools was given its award. We've also applied for other awards, projects, including a roof at Harrison, and that roof all the way around is going to need that, fire alarm improvements for La Plata, and we've kind of got to schedule out for our Facilities Master Plan over the next five years for our projects for those $22 million. The district contribution for Cliff Schools is approximately $6 million, all right? $6 million is what we will contribute from the bond, and I enjoy saying this. When it's all said and done, the state contribution is at the very least $44 million. So, thank you, community. As you heard me say a few moments ago, SB9 did fail. I'm going to put this in the perspective to understand the importance of SB9. For the upcoming tax year, we structured our bonds so that we will always stay at that 10 mils now. We will be able to maintain our ability to access waivers from the state to get larger sums of monies for our schools and for our community. However, losing SB9 put us in a situation where we are no longer able to address the daily maintenance needs for our schools. For the school year '25, '26, going in, going forward, if we have a plumbing issue like we typically do at Silver High School or at any of our other campuses, if we have a project that's not specifically identified in our Facilities Master Plan, we currently do not have dedicated dollars to address it. The state is very clear in how you use dollars that are levied locally. I want to remind the community and the council that when the state has set aside the funds for schools, the commitment was always, "We will pay for your teachers, we will pay for your programming, we will make sure the inside of your school has the resource it needs to educate your kids." But it is the local community's responsibility to maintain your facilities, whether it's the school or the field, our local dollars are which maintains that. And so we have to have a conversation about SB9. Now, the solution to address this without raising taxes is to address how we structured our mil levy for our bond. And so what we intend to do basically is to take, go to the community, ask for a renewal of SB9, adjust the bond levy down to 6.5 from 8.5 with the SB9 being added back to it, and maintaining a 10 mil. Our goal will continue to stay at 10 mils and still be able to pay back our debt levy for the bonds, as well as maintain our schools on an annual basis. All right. Now let's get back to the task force. That was a small commercial break in the middle of all that. Let me get back to the... Let me get back to the task force and the consolidation conversation. So, when we look at the task force work, the group had to answer several questions. Could it work? How would it work? Is this gonna be best for kids? Does it make sense? Will the cost benefit be worth it? And what would the impact be of this change, right? And we looked at at least three scenarios. The first scenario we looked at was a traditional schools and the idea of consolidating just one campus. Within the dialogue, in the facilities masterplan, there was a suggestion that we would consolidate Silver Scholars into one of these other buildings as well. We quickly removed that as an option. We liked Silver Scholars where it is. We're not going to make any changes to Silver Scholars. So, if you look at three and you look at six, you can see where that line goes through it. That's because they include Silver Scholars, and that wasn't an option we were going to do. So, it remained the dialogue of whether to close just Sixth Street or just Jose Barrios, or to do both, right? Option C was an interesting dialogue that came up initially with the facilities masterplan. As we went into the dialogue with the task force, it was determined that at this time, the middle school, high school consolidation wasn't going to do what we needed to do, so that we didn't go into that dialogue. As a quick recap, and I'm not gonna go in great detail in each of these slides, but I wanted to remind you what the capacity and what the utilization was for our elementary school. When you look at the blue line, in this case, you see two-hundred-and-eighty-five. That blue line represents the capacity, the availability for seats in that particular building. The red line represents in two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four, what the enrollment was, right? In this case, one-thirty-six for Sixth Street. The yellow line represents the projected enrollment for that same location by two thousand and twenty-nine. So, you can see where we, what the capacity was in the blue and where we're going by two thousand and twenty-nine. You can see that Sixth Street, current utilization is forty-eight percent. When you look at Jose Barrios, looking at that same understanding, you can see utilization is at sixty-eight percent. Capacity is three-hundred-and-fourteen, projected to be at one-ninety-nine. When you look at Stout, you can see capacity, five-fifty-eight. We are at fifty-six percent utilization. There are approximately two-hundred-and-forty-five seats available. I wanna pause for a second and explain something. If you ever had a kid move out of the house because they went to college or they got that job, they're over twenty and they just moved out, you have that vacant room, two or three, in your house. Now, anyone who has ever gone through this understands that that vacant room doesn't get emptied, boarded up, and closed off. You now expand into it. Maybe it becomes a gym, maybe it comes an office, maybe it becomes a new storage room. But that room continues to be utilized. But in its original intent, it was a bedroom. It's the same thing to be true for our classrooms. Our schools, even though the utilization of those classrooms and students being in them has decreased, we've still expanded and used that space. If you ask any teacher, "Yeah, we're using every room." But if we go back to the original intent of what those spaces were used for, now, we look at where the capacity and utilization is and what it should be. Does that make sense? Nice. So, you can see Harrison as well, five-hundred-and-two capacity. You can see the utilization is currently at sixty-seven percent. La Plata Middle School, when you get to the secondary, you can really see that disparity in utilization versus capacity, right? Currently, two-eighty-nine going to two-eighty-two, capacity at six-fifty-seven. Silver High School, one-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-seven is the capacity, currently at six-forty-seven going to five-eighty-seven, fifty-one percent utilization. What this data told us quite clearly in our conversations, we have a lot of space. It's kind of what happens when everyone moves out and you had a seven-bedroom house, and now it's just you. You have more house than you need. And you're still paying the taxes, you're still paying lights, water, plumbing, all the things you're doing to maintain that extra building. But in reality, or that huge house, but you may only be staying in two rooms. That's what the district is dealing with. We've got to right-size ourselves. When we're looking at consolidation amongst this committee, and again, I wanna reiterate this point, this task force was comprised of parents, grandparents, members of the community, teachers, staff. We had a lot of tough dialogues, right? We met, we had four long sessions, and we looked at over two-hundred-and-forty slides of data. We looked at facilities, educational adequacy. Could a building, if we consolidated, could the new building have the resources needed to be able to take care of all these kids? What about boundaries? What are the boundary needs? And what would they look like if you did traditional or if we grade-banded? I'm gonna talk about that in a minute. We talked about transportation, financial implications, staffing needs. I wanna pause for a second and say this. The staffing needs will always remain the same at this time because the number of staff we need to take care of, teachers, won't change. The conversation we're having about consolidation is about space, not about the individuals. We have way too many empty spaces, but the teachers we have, we still need. Does that make sense? Academics, you know, can we consolidate and still continue to improve the rigor of learning? And then, of course, capacity. What will new space capacity look like? And will we overfill a building? Will we continue to underfill? What is that going to look like? All these data points and more came into play with our conversation. We looked at condition and state rank, and you can see that Jose Barrios and Sixth Street are at the lowest of the state rankings. So, if we have seven-hundred-and-fifty-five schools approximately in the state, give or take a large number of schools, they are ranked from seven-fifty-five being the best-conditioned school to number one being the worst-conditioned school in the ranking. And so, you can see that Sixth Street is twenty-six and Jose Barrios is one-hundred-and-two, okay? So, they are amongst the lowest. That's why you can see them in red. All of our schools, at this point, qualify for systems updates and supports, which is where our bond dollars are gonna be going. Whether it's fixing HVAC, mechanical, plumbing, septic, whatever it is, we're gonna be able to qualify for a match from the state for thirty-seven percent of whatever those projects are. We pay sixty-three percent, the state will contribute thirty-seven. Continuing to just looking at operational costs overall, it is expected that when we go to this process and if we can get to an eighty-five percent efficiency use of our facilities, we can approximately save about one-point-four million dollars per year. Currently, across the district, is looking at our elementaries, we're about sixty percent utilization, taking that average. When we consolidate, depending on the configuration, we can get to approximately ninety-four. Ninety-four is kind of tight for me. When we look at our configurations, I'd much rather get closer to the ninety to eighty-five range. I'd like to make sure that we have space. Everyone wants to make sure you have a little room to stretch out. We wanna make sure that we have the same for our schools. So, two elements of the consolidation, and I'm almost done. I'm gonna keep going, but I'm almost done. If someone throws a rock at me or gives me a stop sign, I'll stop talking. We looked at two elements of consolidation, traditional neighborhood schools versus grade-banding. If you were from, grew up here or from Silver City, some years ago, you likely went to a school that was grade-banding, meaning Stout Elementary was probably all fourth grade or all third grade, right? It wasn't a neighborhood school. It was designated for one particular grade, and that's kind of how that things were divvied up. That conversation came up. There are a huge list of reasons for going back to grade-banding. I provided them here. For the sake of time, I'm not gonna go into them. But we also looked at the traditional sense as well, you know? Keeping it simple, making sure that siblings are there to be able to support their kids, making it a little more convenient for parents to be able to drop off their kids in one location within their neighborhood. There's a lot of dialogue to be had about neighborhood schools versus grade-banding. A lot of dialogue. They looked at transitions, administrative efficiency, a sense of belonging, the impact on the facilities, the ability to collaborate amongst the staff, class size balancing, being evenly distributed, curriculum consistencies. There's a lot of elements that happened. I'm supposed to calmly resume this presentation. Where was I? So, wasn't my imagination? That did sound like what it sounded like.
Yes. Absolutely.
Mayor, can I move for a five-minute recess?
Sure. I'm good if y'all are good.
Counselor Conno would like a motion for a five-minute recess. Do I hear a motion, Counselor Conno?
Mr. Hawkins, I'm gonna move for a five-minute recess.
Is there a second? I have a motion, second. All those in favor, say aye. We will take just a five, three. Back in session. Chief Patel, would you take your microphone and in thirty seconds, tell us what, review what just happened?
So, as we responded outside to the loud banging noises, is all you heard, the general was banging on the sliding glass window, actually asking for help. So, Officer Howdy's out there right now speaking to him, and we have another officer arriving around soon.
Thank you for your speedy response.
No problem.
Mr. Hawkins, please continue.
Alrighty, so, we were talking about traditional schools versus grade-banding. And so, one of the conversations that happened with the task force is at the end of that dialogue, it was a recommendation to really look at grade-banding seriously. And I'll talk about that a little more, I'm gonna move on. So, do a real quick recap. When we look at the capacity for a couple of our schools to house all of our elementary students, you can see here Harrison Schmitt and Stout Elementary. If you maintain the traditional neighborhood school K-five model, you can see that Harrison would be seventy-five percent capacity, while Stout would be eighty-two percent capacity. And this is a K-five model. Someone's going, "Wait a minute, aren't our schools currently K-six?" They are. There's a dialogue to be had regarding sixth grade here momentarily. If we went to the grade-banding model that was presented earlier during our presentation as well, this is what that model would look like. If you went K-two to Schmitt, you would be at ninety percent capacity. If you went three-five to Stout, which I think goes back to what it may have been some years ago as far as fourth grade being there, and I'm not sure if they had other grades. But if you go that three-five model, then you're at seventy-eight percent capacity. That ninety percent capacity at Schmitt is not necessarily too tight, right? As I told you before, I'm much more comfortable between eighty-five, ninety as opposed to ninety-four. Again, you wanna have just a little bit of stretching room. Sixth grade. So, within the dialogue of the task force, the question became, you know, what would happen with our sixth graders? Do we keep them at the elementary? And you could. Now, if you keep them at the elementary, these numbers get a little tighter significantly, right? Because you'd probably be K-three in one spot and four-sixth in the other. You could do it. And the same thing, if you kept sixth grade under the K-five model, once again, these numbers get a little tight, but there's absolutely room to do it. But one thing that we recognize, if you go back, I think I showed you, the La Plata utilization was extremely low. There's a whole wing at the middle school that hasn't been used since we went to Sixth Street, right? It's just empty. When we put sixth graders down to the elementary, we basically vacated a portion of that school. Conceptually, the idea is to go back to the six-seventh eighth, which is the traditional middle school model, utilize that space more effectively, give those sixth graders the opportunity to engage in extracurricular activities as well as learn the middle school under the resources, programming, all the things that need to happen there so that they're gonna be better prepared to go into the high school. What typically happens right now is we get sixth graders who show up to the middle school, and seventh graders, they got one year to figure out what it's like to be in middle school, and then, they've got the next year, they're about to get trained to go to the high school, right? And they don't really have the time to understand what that process of maturity is in the middle grades. By moving sixth grade back up to the middle schools, you kind of create that natural middle school process of learning and maturation. And you're only gonna still be at sixty-one percent of utilization. One of the other dialogues that the task force had was looking at boundaries, right? There are some boundary issues, minor though they may be, they have huge impacts. And so, we addressed that need. I'll talk about that here in a little bit. And then, of course, we talked about transportation, with transportation being impacted. If we did traditional more, or if we did grade-banding. What we were told by Montoya Bussing is, from a cost standpoint, you're not gonna see a huge difference at all in dollars because the number of stops that those buses would need to make are going to remain the same. Now, this is conceptually a little different to think about, so let me put it this way. Right now, all of our buses at the elementary are even, at the elementary, they go to Sixth Street, and then, they may go to Stout, or they may go to Harrison, right? If you, and/or Jose Barrios, right? So, at least two stops. And right now, when they were consolidated, they still went to the middle school and still went to the high school, right? What will happen is, if we go to consolidation and we remove Sixth Street from that list and Jose Barrios from that list, those buses, instead of going to Sixth Street, are either gonna go to Harrison and Stout or Stout and Harrison, still two stops. The way they articulated is, you're still gonna have two stops. You're just adjusting where those stops are going. So, from a cost standpoint, it's gonna be pretty neutral. With the increased times, approximately five or ten minutes possibly for traditional schools, in grade-banding, you could possibly see a decrease of five or ten minutes. And all that's gonna depend on traffic and things of that nature, which is hard to predict right now. But what it came down to, there would be a minimal impact for transportation when we consolidate it. Other things we considered is, you know, what do we need to adjust within our bond program to make any improvements to schools that would need to be made as a result of this decision? Would there be any future conversations? Do we have any improved costs or savings? Staffing, are we gonna save any money in attrition over time? Again, I told you guys before, right now, the number of teaching and staff that we need, we still need. But obviously, seven, eight years from now, when you're down your students, there may be a different conversation of attrition when you don't need those numbers. But right now, we need everybody we got. Curriculum, what changes would be there? The ability to teach, for teachers to collaborate? These were all discussions we had in great detail. We also went down through a list and looked at grade levels, school fit, deferred maintenance, improvements, the savings. There was a lot of dialogues, and this is just one of the mini-slides of discussion that we did a deep dive into. Prelimarily, so I say preliminarily, the board meets on June sixteenth. On June sixteenth, the final recommendations from the task force are gonna be put forth. So, I don't wanna get ahead of the board or that presentation. But what I will say is, as it has been said, the facilities masterplan committee made a recommendation to close two schools. Respectfully knowing that there's history, there's heart, and there's a lot of just understanding of relationships with these two buildings. Also, understanding that at some point, as a community, as a district, we have to recognize that we can't continue to maintain all the buildings that we have with the funds that we have. The recommendation was to consolidate Sixth Street and Jose Barrios to Schmitt and Stout. That's what the facilities masterplan committee recommended. When the task force completed its process, they came to the same conclusion. The task force, after deep diving into the data, they looked at everything, right? Maintenance costs, necessary improvements, transportation, and what the next five years will look like. There are a whole lot of things that need to go into what the next year for the school year will look like before we're ready to consolidate. One of the reasons this process will have taken two and a half years is because we didn't wanna rush it. If you recall, this conversation started in January, two thousand and twenty-four. We've been having this dialogue for a long time. By the time it goes before the board, it will have been eighteen months just in discussion. Before the board makes the decision, excuse me, it'll have been, gosh, I think about twenty months. And by the time it's enacted, it will have been two and a half years since the very beginning of this conversation. There's a lot of things that can be said about this process, but you can't say it wasn't rushed. And no one can say that we didn't seek involvement and guidance from our community and resources. We're gonna be looking at food services, information technology, financing, staffing, curriculum. There are still a lot of things that need to come together over the course of this next year. We also wanna make sure that we pay homage and respect to the buildings if the board, the school board, makes that final decision. What does that year look like? How do we respect the parents, the history, and everything that goes into those buildings? Also, part of that dialogue is what happens with those buildings? We recognize that Sixth Street has a long history. I believe it's one of the, it is the oldest brick building in the state of New Mexico. Jose Barrios has a lot of cultural significance to Grant County. We know that Aldo Leopold has approached us and asked us about having a permanent home in one of those buildings. That's something we'd like to see possibly happen. There's some things that have to happen with that, but we're open to that dialogue. We were approached by a museum not too long ago about the potential for one of those buildings as well. I do think there's an opportunity for those buildings to continue to exist and be a part of our community in some other facet. Hopefully, during the course of this next year, when the board makes its decision, we'll be able to look at those and explore what those options are. I wanna pause for just a second. just a second and make sure I mention this about the boundaries, right? So when we talk about boundary adjustments, if we do the traditional model for Stout and Schmitt, one of the things that needed to be addressed was we have a group of kids out in Arenas Valley that leave Arenas Valley, pass Stout Elementary, pass Jose Barrios, and goes all the way out to Schmitt every day. That's one of those areas where from the, uh, bus transportation is not really economical, it's not, doesn't make a lot of sense. We have the same type of issue that happens right around Little Walnut, up, Little Wal- Walnut. There's a street where kids go to one school, and the, on the other side, they go to another school. And so when we looked at the boundaries, we tried to fix some of those things, realizing that there may be a household or two that comes forward and says, but we've always gone to this school, can we stay there? Those types of conversations will happen. But overall, we needed to clean up the boundaries, and so we were able to do that. Timeline implementation. I'm almost done. You guys are staying with me. Great. And no one's snoring. Perfect. Alright, so the final committee meeting was in May. In June next week, our board will have a presentation presented to them. They will not make a decision until August. And I'll tell you why we did that. We knew if we made a decision this summer, do you know what everyone would believe was happening by the time August started? Their school was closing. Everyone would panic and they'd want to know where are they going to go to school. There is no change going to happen this current school year. And so by making the decision to have that announcement made in August, after school has started, we wouldn't have to worry about people panicking in the summer about what was going to happen. So that's why the decision was made, to make the final decision on what the board was going to do in August, right? Based on whatever their decision is, we'll begin the planning process in September, all the way through spring, in May, depending on the recommendation, whether it be Sixth Street or JB. If not both, we will do that. We'll then continue improvements for Stout and Harrison, whatever those projects are, to get them ready for the upcoming school year, twenty-twenty-six fall. Looking forward, there's a projection you see there, twenty-twenty-eight, twenty-thirty-two. The feasibility study did several elements. It really looked at capacity and utilization. It looked at our elementary schools, but it also looked at our secondary schools and asked us the questions, where do we see our schools in the near future? One of the things that I encountered as I took this job and as we began this conversation with the Facilities Master Plan is making sure that we have a long-term support system and plan for our district and our school. It can't just be present. It takes time, it takes dialogue. One of the conversations moving forward was looking at La Plata Middle School and Silver High School and looking at the conversation of do we need new facilities? You saw where they were listed on that ranking. In five to seven years, they're going to continue to deteriorate. And we're going to be in a unique position as a community to be able to have a conversation about what could happen, because those spaces are overly, they're, they're too big. Once again, you have huge spaces that are hardly being used to the capacity they need, they need to be. Between twenty-twenty-eight and twenty-thirty-two as a community, you're going to be, going to be in a position to address that issue. We have land in between middle school, high school, in the field to look at options. And the feasibility study really gave some interesting guidance about what you could do as a community. I like that the board will have that document and resource to be able to plan out so that the conversations that we've been having for the last two years don't seem like they just popped up out of the blue, but part of a long-term sustainability so that the next generation of students for the next forty, fifty, sixty years, you're going to be ready to go. I know that Silver Plains have been here for a long time, so we've got to make some adjustments. Part of those adjustments right now are dealing with consolidation, but we also need to look to the future for our secondary students as well, just like we're doing for Cliff. And now, I will stand for your questions.
Do we have any questions from the Counsel, Counselor Cunno?
Actually, it's more comment than question. First of all, thank you to you and the task force and the other committee that worked on this, because you can tell that you've spent a considerable amount of time thinking about all the options. I personally am happy that you're thinking about doing banding. That's how I grew up, and I think it worked really well, so hopefully that works out. The thing that has struck me though, as I've thought about this for two years already, is I know this isn't probably the biggest deal for some people, but it is for others. If we lose Jose Barrios, Jose Barrios was an important part of our community history. And so I'm hoping that there can be some sort of other, you know, between the town and the, the school district, we come up with some other thing we could name after him, because I think he's very, very important. And it's kind of just coincidental that we got to see what police officers do firsthand during this meeting, and, you know, he was killed in the line of duty, so he's very important to our history. So if we could just keep him in the back of our minds and think of something that we can, you know, so that future generations hear that name too.
Now, Counselor Cunno, Mr. Mayor, Counselors, one of the things I would, I posed to someone was, if you looked at an Aldo, I'm speaking out of turn at the moment, but if you looked at an Aldo, would they be willing to continue to keep the name of that building to remain the same, right? And that was a dialogue that was pretty positive, right? Depending on, and again, I'm speaking out of turn, but depending on what happens with that building or Sixth Street, I would hope that there is some way to preserve the history. You know, first and foremost to me would be, how do you use those buildings? And how can they be a service to the community? And what does that look like? Whether it's the city having the conversation or the county. As we all know, we are landlocked, right? And so there's not a lot of new spaces to do a lot of things. Now, arguably, those buildings have a lot of need. There's a reason why we're having the conversation and you're looking at deferred maintenance, whether it's a roof, whether it's a whole new plumbing unit at JB, or just ripping out, you know, the, this, getting to be ADA compatible. There's a lot of things that need to happen in both those buildings. But if they're able to be salvaged by the community, by an industrial entity, whether it be, again, museum, historical significance, the city, I do think that that would be worth the dialogue for us.
Are there any other comments or questions by the council members? Counselor Snyder?
Yeah, thank you for the update. And I just want to say with a decreasing student population, there's a tough decisions that need to be made. And you've touched on the history, but I kind of want to, you know, repeat a little bit of the history of Sixth Street. It is on a site, is the oldest occupied educational site in the state. And the first school was built in eighteen-eighty-two, and it was made of brick, and it was the only brick schoolhouse, not in the state of New Mexico, but in the territory of New Mexico. And I'm just hoping, and it sounds like you are thinking along those ways, that we can think of a way that we can keep that site an educational site. And once again, thank you for your update.
Any other comments by council members? Counselor Prince?
Um, just to try to briefly summarize and bottom line what we're getting in the presentation, as somebody who also, not a fast talker, but I also happen to talk fast, happy to revisit any of these concerns. I'm seeing four primary changes that are coming in with this summer and what we're going to be seeing some votes on. The Facility Master Plan update from just this past month, I mentioned it was signed in in May twenty-four, twenty-five?
Twenty-twenty-four.
Twenty-four. What we're going to be looking at then is going to be maintenance and taxes of the structures, changes with grade banding, what we're going to be looking at for capacity and utilization, and, just want to make sure I've got my notes on this one here, school boundaries. Is there anything else from this fore then that you would say at the presentation just from the amounts that we just took a look at?
Counselor Prince, Mr. Mayor, counselors, I believe that that's a really good, quick summary. I feel kind of awkward. I could have just sat that, sat down, saved you about thirty minutes. But what I would ask also, and you did a great job, I would also ask that a key element is also recognizing, we've got to pass SB nine so that we can maintain the schools that we have. So when we consolidate, if that's what the board decides, then being able to make sure we can maintain these facilities for long term is a key part, understanding that capital outlay dollars, which the bond was approved, and we can't thank the community enough, are designed to address projects in the Facilities Master Plan. Every item that was earmarked in our Facilities Master Plan is eligible for funding, support, and match from the state to be done. But anything not in there, come this school year in August, and it will happen. We will have a plumbing issue at the high school. It happens every year. We will have some unit of HVAC that needs to be redone. We will have a circumstance that happens over at one of our fields. And at the moment, there are zero dollars coming in locally to maintain those facilities. And so that is something that we, we're going to need to address as a community.
And so I just echo that from conversations that I've been able to have with county tax folks. One of the major strategies that is just kind of the default thinking I've seen has been directed tax financing. Everything has to be planned for, and then we sell it to the public for what we have vote on in the November terms. But obviously, the problems and challenges we have that come up, we have emergencies where all of a sudden, we're going to have a huge chunk of the landslide into the ditch. There is going to be a major water main break that's going to cause then further extensive damage. And so right now, I see us getting kind of pulled thin because of just some of that thinking. It seems to be almost anathema to just have money sitting in an account, ready to go for emergencies, unless we have to shut down the institution then for months at a time while we then have to address it. So I just want to make sure then that if we're going to be looking at the different types of tax financing, we understand sort of what the default is with this directed tax financing, and then what we maybe should be thinking about, of just having money in a general fund available so that we can address these issues as they come up. Just from running so lean, I know Grant County's property taxes are among the lowest in the nation. And I just want to say, it's not, you know, correlation causation, but it should not be surprising that our property taxes are so low. And then also, we have issues of this magnitude when it comes to our facilities. So just making sure that some of these conversations about taxes from what I'm responsible to for the public, taxes are not always met. And so as far as us being able to start doing the conversations in public to ensure that these institutions are not only going to maybe just have to go through some consolidation period right now, but we can maybe start thinking about the funding. I know we only have a three percent lightning tax increment that we can do on a yearly basis. And so there's only so much that we can make changes for. But just on a personal note, I mean, as a public school kid and as my parents as public school teachers, it is one of the ones that I think is absolutely appropriate.
Any other comments by council members?
Thank you. I just want to add to that, if you don't mind me following up. I just want to reiterate your point. Our solution won't raise taxes. We will just adjust our debt levy. We're going to adjust that down so that we have room for our SB nine, so that doesn't make a change. So when we, when the community goes and votes for SB nine, you're voting to remain at the same mileage, just allow us to adjust how those dollars are spent so we can maintain our facilities.
So, I mean, as far as the major issues, just have to say, sixth graders getting banned out from the K through now five on that one, heard a hundred percent support. I don't know what's going on, if it's people's screens, but kids are getting older, younger. And so just making sure then that we don't have those types of growing pains then affect all of the grades beneath. Absolutely understandable. I have questions about the methodology that we have from the Capital AE Group. Just did a little bit of rudimentary check-in on them before tonight's presentation. And I understand them also to be sort of a construction management company. They've got locations in five different states, if I'm not correct. And I just kind of wonder then as far as where their numbers are coming from for any of the bids and the costs that we're looking at. And this isn't to say that, you know, we shouldn't be underbudgeting any of the issues. But some of the figures that we're looking at are about seventy-four million dollars to be, if I'm not mistaken, about seventy-something million dollars right now to be able to catch up on what we've been lacking on in the past ten to fifteen years or so here. Typically, we do have to go through a public bidding process. We do have to be able to vet our sources and have that then reviewed through on accounting. And that's just something then that I know they're kind of doing a bit more back of the envelope than I am thoroughly convinced on. And I understand that they're a construction company, but we do have variance in that.
So the answer to that, if you don't mind, if you indulge me for about two minutes. So when they do their calculations, whether it be, in this case within New Mexico, which they've done many projects for, they work through PSCOC. PSCOC has a model resource that helps to break down the cost, whether it's for ventilation, for an HVAC, or for any flooring work. When they go into that, they use part of the state model for approximating the costs along with square footage and things of that nature. So it is at least New Mexico specific, if not regionally specific. And so the cost of a building, for example, for rebuilding Cliff, that is going to be a reflective document based on our adequacy standards that are set by the state, right? And all the components that go into that square footage. What we know to be true, to your, to your point, is the cost of construction continues to grow at an exponential rate. And so even when you, they say the cost is forty-four billion now, it's a likelihood that we're going to see a fifteen percent increase on that. Practically by the time it's done in, in two years, absolutely, based on what the data has told us. But we know what the public schools' capital outlay council is. Once they approve a project, when that price goes up, they adjust their price to compensate for the difference. And so they at least have that going for them.
I'm going to now turn the time over to any other council member that wants to make a comment. Since this affects a lot of people in our community, I'm going to give the city administration and staff a chance to ask any questions or make any comments. Any?
I speak with Mr. Hawkins all the time and he keeps me up on everything. And so I don't have any questions for him. I mean, we're working on some other stuff. We're going to work on some other stuff.
I'm also going to give members of the public a chance to ask a question or make a comment. And if you have a question, you'll have to come up to the microphone.
I don't bite. I haven't thrown anything in quite some time.
Bruce Ashburn, I have had the honor of working with this process from the beginning, pretty much through the entire process. And I will tell you that it is not an easy process, and everybody has their own, what do you want to call it, protected interest, shall we say? And to see the group of people get together and be willing to talk about how we can come to some kind of a negotiated solution that absolutely must be done. There's no question that we cannot afford to continue to spend, I believe the number was about a million and a half dollars in, in additional costs that we're spending to, to heat, cool, air condition, continue to repair. We had people that are contractors that are actually doing work on these buildings that are, are in the meeting saying they're so old that to repair them now, there's no choice but to dig things up, to go in the walls, rip them down, go, go deeper than what a normal repair would be because the buildings are so old. We're not in a position where you can Band-Aid repairs at, at this point. My own elementary school in my hometown is no longer there, and, and it does bother me. I can't, I'm not going to lie. It bothers me when I go home and I see that it's, it's no longer there. They turned it into a fire. Forgive me, chief. But, but with that said, there's, there's choices that have to be made. There's choices that are, are necessary. And I, I just believe that this is one, in order for us to move forward and ever have a chance to truly examine having new schools in our area, we've got to do this. And I think, I think we've got the right person in charge of this.
Any questions, any other, any questions from the public, from the press? Thank you, Superintendent Hawkins.
Thank you.
May I, if I may?
I would like to move on.
We have schools that are closing. I just had two further things I just wanted to check in on.
Okay, make it quick.
No worries. So just want to double check then as far as the demographics and enrollment numbers that we have here for K through twelve. You're kind of clocking and noticing the new private educational institutions and this sort of our historic private education institutions, you know, they've kind of expanded towards adding portables. Do you have any data or information as far as this K through twelve historic enrollment? Does this include private schools, private institutions in it, or just the students that are enrolled in public institutions?
Just the students enrolled in public institutions. So it doesn't include Aldo Leopold, it doesn't include Montessori, nor does it include Cavalry.
Cavalry and?
Cavalry, right? It's just our students. When you look at those populations of students, I don't want to undersell Aldo, but I, I, I don't think they have more than two hundred students, if not, you know, a little less than that. I would say the same thing about Montessori or Cavalry. Now, they may be, they're maybe much larger. I can't speak expertly to it. But yeah, the, our numbers are just public school.
Okay. Just want to make sure, just because I don't want there to ever be sort of any kind of concern or fight between the private educational institutions and the public ones. But, you know, we do have knock-on effects, and making sure then that we can maintain public trust for our public institutions is a big chunk of the job here. And then I just want to just double check as far as the teacher attrition. Presumably, we're not going to have any teachers losing their jobs on this. But if we do have folks that are nearing the age of retirement, as it sounds with the consolidation, with attrition, we're not looking to refill those positions at this time. Should there be a change?
I believe at this time, if there was, if a teacher retired, we would still have to post that position and fill it. At this current state of where we are in the district over the next several years, we need the bodies we need to continue to provide the quality education. I think on the other side of five or ten years, when we are in that significant decrease of two hundred to three hundred students- of two hundred to three hundred students, depending on the grade that those, the grades that that occurs in, I think you can have that dialogue about attrition. But if we have four teachers that retire this next year while we're going into those processes, we're still going to need four teachers, right? And so that's, that's a long time from coming.
And then have we had any conversation about deed restrictions or potentially with the dispensation of the properties? One of the things we have to do, uh, with public properties is figure out how it's going to transition. And even when we have schools that go into becoming fire departments versus entering into private property sales or private development, um, I would just encourage and ask
Yeah.
Wonderful. Just want to make sure that's on the table right now as a lot of these properties, especially considering their placement in our communities, uh, some people look at them with more dollars in their eyes than the rest of us.
Thank you Superintendent.
Can I ask one more question?
We, and I'll move to
Can I ask one more question?
Huh?
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah.
Yes, uh, just a real quick, I, you know, you were talking about plumbing issues and stuff. What is the long-term plan for the high school then? Are you thinking we're going to need to rebuild or are you thinking we're going to be able to use it?
It's so funny that you ask that question. Almost as if I planted that thought process. Long-term for the high school, um, in the middle school, I would say between twenty-twenty-eight and twenty-thirty-two. Those buildings in, in La Plata is there. If you walk La Plata, you know this. Long-term on the other side, you need to look at doing a combination, middle school, high school, because you will have so few students at the numbers you have now that have the two separate buildings and the resources and the extra curricular and all the needs. You're just continuing to further the same issue you have at the elementary, which is you're, you're spending a lot of money to maintain two buildings that could be one. And so if you're asking me what my opinion is, uh, between twenty-twenty-eight, twenty-thirty-two, as a community, those buildings will be so aged, even though they, we've done some work on them, but age is still age. I think we're going to be in the right spot to look at what modernization looks like without having any impact at all on what we, where we currently stand on our, our mileage, um, because we will have paid so much into our debt levy for this current bond that we will have the ability with a ten mil waiver to go back to the state and ask them to build us a new school. And it's, that happens like twice in a lifetime. To be candid with you, it is rare that you have an opportunity to apply for a waiver, have the dollars that you need to build. And it just so happens that Silver is going to be in a position in that window to build a brand, another brand new school and have the state pay for it if they wanted to.
Thank you.
Thank you Superintendent Hawkins. We will now move to agenda item nine. Public hearings and there are none?
Under the person, we're going to have Bart Roselli do his report on museum. Bart Roselli was going to do a report from the museum.
Okay.
In light of the time. This is, um, yeah. In light of the time, I'm just going to jump to questions. No. Sorry. Um, for, I, yeah, all seriousness though, I'm really thankful that the council is asked or Alex has suggested I give an update on what's going on at the museum, and I do have a brief report. Uh, but I want to say one thing is that I'm very happy and honored to have such an important job as the director of the museum in this community. For me personally, it's kind of a capstone. I've had a long career, my hair didn't start out this color, uh, and my mission has been to place the museum, this particular museum, but all museums, s- s- front and center in every community because they play an important role. There are memory, there are hopes, there are pride, there are important historical pieces that we don't want to forget. So museums shouldn't just be places that collect a lot of dust. They should be active in their community and they should address particular needs that a community has. It's, it, uh, so anyway, I feel lucky to be here. Well, tonight I have a brief report about what museum staff have been up to over the last year in serving Silver City and the wider Grant County. Uh, by the way, we have a stellar staff. We have some really professional, talented, dedicated, uh, staff members along, working alongside more than seventy great volunteers, one of them sitting right behind me. Uh, we couldn't do it without, without the volunteers, but the staff, uh, we're lucky to have each and every one of them. So I'd like to make three points. Uh, I have forty-two slides to make. No, I don't. I'd like to make three points about the impact that Silver City Museum has had recently on our community, our state, and our nation. Yes, we've had an impact on the, the nation's awareness of Silver City and Silver City Museum. One, we're up in our game with our school programs. Two, we are getting peer recognition, recognition. You know, every, every profession, whether it's attorneys or firefighters or police, have associations, local and national associations. We have one called the American Alliance of Museums, and I'll get into that a little bit later. Uh, and more widespread awareness, not just within the county, but regionally as far as Tucson, Albuquerque, Santa Fe, Taos, Las Cruces, and El Paso. So first, we're serving more schoolchildren this year than ever before, at least the records I have in the Silver City Museum. We have programs with schools who come and visit the museum, and we have programs that go into schools in Silver Consolidated and Baird and Cobra. Uh, more than six hundred students visited the museum so far this year. And another two hundred students had programs delivered to them in their schools in all of those, uh, in, in every school district, uh, in our area. We've developed four new study units, we call them, using local history that supports state and local, uh, curriculum requirements. We've developed it for grades one, grades four, grades eight, and grades eleven. Um, the Daily Press, there was a wonderful article that, um, appeared in the Daily Press, um, on some date, sorry, um, on the front page, which talks about the various programs happening at the school, at the Silver City Museum. Thank you Lisa, you made us, it was a wonderful article. The, in your packets, there is a new effort on the part of the museum to reach out to young people. It's every kid or family who comes to the museum can pick up one of these activity guides and help them learn and get deeper into the exhibit that we have up. So the Silver City Museum is not just for adults, it's for kids and families. Not only do we have this activity guide that kids could pick up, families can pick up, but we've built into the labels questions that a, a parent could use to help a kid learn more about that exhibit. So we're, we're reaching out to, uh, much more and more young people. The second point I want to make is that we've generated recognition among our peers. So our, Javier Marufo, our amazing curator, and I made a presentation last year in Albuquerque at the American Folklore Society, and we made a short presentation about our Nuestro Vos, our Chihuahua Hill History Project. A person who happened to be in the audience just by, she was interested in the topic, happens to be the president of the American Alliance of Museums, that's our national association. She was so impressed with the work we were doing with Chihuahua Hill and the, all the oral histories that Javi collected, that she invited us to come to Los Angeles last month and make a presentation at their annual conference. Now, this is big news, especially for a museum guy who's been around for a long time. It's a national, it's national attention that Silver City got for a project we did, a local history project. The American Alliance of Museums attracts five thousand delegates from every single state in the union. So there are five thousand museum professions. Now, it gets better. The president, in her keynote speech, calls out the Silver City Museum for doing this Chihuahua Hill History Project and says to five thousand delegates, this is the kind of project every history museum should be doing in the country. Javi almost jumped out of his seat because we didn't know it was, she was going to say it. So na- national, national attention, something we're very, very proud of. When Javi came back with that story, our heads were just exploding. We'll be appearing at a state, a by-state, uh, conference, uh, in the fall. The Historical Society of New Mexico is linking up with the Arizona Historical Society, uh, and we will again be presenting on some of our projects here. Another way we really appreciate and take recognition is our partnerships. We have a wonderfully rich partnership with LULAC. We support their programs and they promote our programs. We also have a partnership with WIL, Western Institute of Lifelong Learning. We've just struck, uh, a formal agreement with Silver City Theater to bring forward our, a living history program where we will research and present historical characters. And Silver City has a, a long record of doing that. The group who performed out at the, the cemetery, we, they have packed up their bags, they've kind of aged out, but they've given us all their material. So we'll be doing, we'll be using that material and others to bring living history into schools, into the streets, and at the museum. We also have partnerships, um, with Scotty West Media and Desert Exposure to help us, uh, and I think also recently with the Daily Press. We're also connected to the Chamber of Commerce, Prospectors, Rotary, Freeport, United Way, New Mexico Arts, uh, Council, and the New Mexico Humanities Council. Okay, coming to the finish line here. Third point, we have generated new waves of awareness. We threw, um, uh, so a promotion campaign about our Nuestro Vos exhibit, because when Javi first got involved with this project, I said, Javi, this project is never going to end. There's always somebody else out there we haven't spoken to who has a connection to Chihuahua Hill. And we're promoting our project region-wide, as I said. Because of the promotion activities, some radio ads and, and, um, and social media, this month alone, we had fifty thousand social media hits on our Facebook and Instagram. We average about six thousand a month. So from six thousand to fifty thousand, so a lot more people are hearing about us and they're reaching out and saying, you know, my, my great-grandmother lived on Chihuahua Hill, I live in Tucson now, but can we talk? And we can arrange that. Without our knowing it, um, a museum supporter took out a full-page ad in the Daily News just giving kudos to our staff and some of the work we were doing. We were shocked, again, we didn't, we didn't set this up. She paid out of her own money to produce this, this wonderful testimony to the work that Silver City Museum is doing. KT SMTV in El Paso just contacted me. They want to do a feature on Silver City Museum and the town at large. So they'll be sending out a, a TV crew, we're not quite sure yet, probably within a few weeks, to film at the museum and to film, uh, the town to produce a feature about Silver City. Our latest exhibit, um, is about the role of women in healthcare. Kim Petrovic, who is the leader of the nursing program at Western, uh, was on our advisory committee, and she's connected to a statewide association of nurses. And that statewide association of nurses, the New Mexico Association, the New Mexico Nurses Association, produces a monthly magazine that goes out to twenty-five thousand nurses who are part of this association. Twenty-five thousand nurses every month get this magazine. Because of our exhibit, she brought, uh, two folks who are involved with this association. One of them was Secretary of Health, uh, under Richardson. And they were so impressed with our exhibit that they want to have their fall conference here in Silver City and use our exhibit as, as a reception. So we're really excited about the, the coverage that we would get, uh, with these nurses coming to Silver City. Also in your packet, you have a couple other things. One is our latest, a latest copy of our newsletter, The Mansardian, um, which is actually trademarked by the town of Silver City. Town of Silver, Silver City owns the trademark on this, um, this newsletter. We opened, uh, well, we retrofitted our Nuestro Vos, our Chihuahua Hill exhibit, moved it upstairs to a more permanent location so there'll always be something at the Silver City Museum about Chihuahua Hill and our Mexican-American citizens. You also have in your packet our gallery guide, so everybody who comes to the museum gets a copy of this. It's a mini-history of Chihuahua Hill, but it goes beyond that because it's got all of these QR codes, which if you have a smartphone, you can listen to many of the oral histories we collected as part of this project. We present at lots of community, uh, events like Tamal Fest, and we were just at Fiesta Latina at the Clay Fest. We keep a scorecard of, uh, our, uh, of our accomplishments. We're always looking at attendance, um, we're looking at our volunteer support, our communications reach, our education reach, our collections management, and our store sales. So the, the numbers, I won't bore you with the numbers, but we're looking pretty strong when it comes to attendance and comes to our social media research, uh, reach. Last thing, coming out, I hope this month, is a book that's being published by Mimbres Press called Unpacking Silver City. We commissioned with ten different historians to write ten different chapters on different aspects of life in Grant County. And that'll be published by Mimbres Press in the fall, I'm told. So we're, we're up in our game with schools and teachers. Uh, we've gotten some great professional and national recognition for the work we're doing, and we've got new waves of awareness, uh, thanks to our, our promotional efforts. So thank you for letting me share some of the good news. Uh, I'm always happy to brag about what our staff is doing at the Silver City Museum. And thank you so much to Alex Brown for the continued strong, solid support we've been getting. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any council member have any questions? Council Ben Coman?
Bart, I just want to thank you and your staff for doing a really great job. Uh, I really enjoy the Chihuahua Hill story, growing up there as a young kid. I have some stories that I would probably like to share, uh, spoken with Javier, especially with my encounter as a young child with the Brown Berets coming to town.
Yes.
So I, I would love to spend some time and share my, what it was like growing up as a kid there.
Oh, excellent, thank you.
You guys are doing a great job, thank you.
Thanks. Our partnership with the Silver City Theater, they're hoping to bring this play, uh, The Last, Last Angry Brown Beret.
Brown Hats. Last Angry Brown Hat.
Uh, Brown Hat, excuse me. And we hope to be partnering with them to help promote it and present it, so, yeah. We have the exact opposite problem that Superintendent has. He's got more space than he needs, we've got more stuff than space. And so putting the Chihuahua Hill exhibit up on the second floor, it's great to have that floor space, but it's not the most accessible space. So we're looking at ways of making that space more accessible using, uh, TV cameras and, um, video loops and, uh, websites to, to somebody who doesn't or isn't able to climb those stairs, they can appreciate that exhibit in other ways. So we're, we're working on that accessibility.
I want to clear something up.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Since you're talking about space and the school's talking about space, I want to clear up that it was not our museum that was asking for the school.
Any other comments or questions from the council, council friends?
I just want to commend you all so good for what a phenomenal job. Uh, CD twelfth, the museum did for hosting the State's Museum Society. I still hear about that conference from everybody around the municipal beginning. For some folks, it's the only time they've been able to have a chance to visit Silver City, and they've come back since. So thank you so much for your leadership.
Sure thing. Sure thing, you know, at that conference, that's where I met the director of the New Mexico State History Museum, Billy Garrett, who had been a town councillor, I think, in Las Cruces, but he's now the director of the State Museum, and we had a chance to talk about our recently acquired Lim family collection, Lim is a Chinese family, one of several Chinese families, and we, we got a couple grants to kind of catalog this amazing collection of photographs, documents, and objects, and he was so impressed with some of the work we were doing, he gave us some money to help manage that collection, and wants to work with us, once the collection is catalogued, to develop a statewide, uh, exhibit about the Chinese in New Mexico, so we're very excited, that conference was very helpful for us.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Thank you for that very informative presentation, it was a surprise to me, I hadn't been notified of it, but thank you very much.
Sure thing.
Next is agenda item ten, unfinished business and there is none, next is agenda item eleven, new business and there is none, this concludes the business of the town of Silver City, do I hear a motion to adjourn, Councilman?
May I, I move adjourned.
Is there a second?
I'll second you.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, we are hereby adjourned.